Good evening, everyone. We're going to the Senate County Board's Reprisal and Regular Meeting for Tuesday, April 14th. Okay, we'll call Wednesday.
Supervisor Reynolds, Supervisor Jeffrey Trout, Supervisor Brownell.
Here.
Supervisor Martini.
Here.
Supervisor Horst, Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Schmetter.
Here.
Supervisor Kono Mutter.
Here.
Supervisor Reichter.
Here.
Supervisor Partey.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
Supervisor Dontrau.
Here.
Supervisor Enzlo.
Here.
Supervisor Shifkin.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Please join us for the new.
For the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation, our God, in this world, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, first up, we have one public hearing tonight for local law five of the year 2025, override the tax revenue limit for the state of the community to move up three days. Any discussion? All in favor of a public hearing? A vote, here, public hearing now.
All in favor, vote.
Second.
First and second, any discussion of public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, vote for hearing or not voting. All right, we have some petitioners tonight. First up is April from the House. Okay, all right. Lynn, there you are. All right.
Yeah, I can see everybody tonight. That's right, usually people have their backs to me. So hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to welcome everyone to the county's historical courthouse. And I'd like to extend a special note of gratitude for all the restorations that the board has done over the last few years to this building. Hopefully, you'll all be able to take a walk downstairs and you can see outside, know that I'm told that it will be done shortly. I also would like to thank Bob Stuck and his crew. They do a great job helping us throughout the year with pretty much whatever we need, even if it's just so listen to me on the phone and ask a lot of questions, so thank you, Bob. I'd kind of like to share what the Friends of the Three Bears have accomplished over the past few months. You've seen this kind of information before, it's a data sheet at your place, and it gives you an idea of the number of people who've visited the site, the number of programs we provided, and the amount of hours needed to make this happen. Our operations manager put this document together as she's done in the past, but more importantly, she made these events happen. Without her, it would be very difficult for our volunteers to host events in the amount that we did this year. In addition, because of her many hours of research last year to secure original documents for submission to the Pomeroy grant application, we did secure, as her aware, two historical markers, one for mama bear and one for papa bear. And we delayed the dedication because of construction, because we wanted to make sure we could offer an open house, and so we needed the building to be open to do that, so we're hoping to do that in 2026. You'll see on your sheet the number of events that we held. We did have the same number of concerts, however, we had fewer arc classes. We did not host any historic talks due to the space limitations and a reduction in grant funding that we received. Visitation was also down, but those who did visit were very intrigued by the rich history that we have here in Seneca County, and they promised they'd come back the next summer when they could actually come into the building. We did change our Congress markets to Saturday mornings this past summer, and with the help of Seneca County Cooperative Extension, we were able to bring in three new vendors to the market, which gave us a total of nine vendors. CCE also set up tables with goods from local farms and businesses, and any produce that was left over at the end of their sales each week was donated to the Open Federated Church Food Kitchenery. And I will say that having activity in the park was a very welcome sight, and it was a great place for people in the community to come in and gather, even if they didn't shop. So while the concert numbers were about the same, our market numbers doubled. We had an average of 60 shoppers per week, which is up from an average of 28 left for this year. If you'll note now, in the upcoming events, the Open Winter Fest will be taking place on December 6th, and the Friends of the Three Bears will hold our annual tree auction fundraiser. There's also going to be a lot of new and different activities on that date, so I hope you all can come down to Ovid and help celebrate with us. In addition to the events that we hosted, the towns of Ovid and Lodi started holding court again last month, right here in this space. And the town of Ovid will begin holding their monthly board meetings here in January, and all continues to go very well with those arrangements. So again, thank you very much for your time and for your continuing support.
Thank you. Jenny Bennett, the director of the St. Paul's Library.
Good evening, all. I'm Jenny Burnett. I'm the director of the St. Paul's Library, and it's an honor to speak before you this evening. Your support is said absolutely overwhelming and continues to be one of the greatest investments in our communities. This year, the Seneca County Library has seen numbers reach beyond pre-pandemic times, showing just how vital the environment within these institutions remains. Libraries are freedom, privacy, and so much more. Now we don't even have to walk through our doors to receive training, find connection, or wait what you want. Earlier this year, we sent you a video highlighting our many achievements from 2024. I'd like to share a few of those with you and invite you to enjoy our handouts, which showcase our numbers and our digital services. 2024 was a standout here for the Seneca County Libraries in many ways. First and foremost this year, the Edith E. Ford Library was saved by the brave and brave women of this community. The library became a place of safe harbor and comfort for all residents. In times of great trouble, libraries have always found ways to transform into what their community needs. The staff at the Edith E. Ford Library did just that. In just a few short hours, they became a part of the community in ways that most of us had never seen from an institution. They answered the call to be a distribution center, a giving coordination point, and even more. While the numbers I'll mention in a moment show the use of our libraries, it is our ability to rise to meet our community needs as they evolve within the moment that shows Seneca County Libraries are truly exceptional places within our communities. In 2024, we welcomed over 116,000 people through our block of doors. The people of Seneca County were invited to attend over 1,682 programs, and over 30,484 patrons came together to read and learn with us. Our wifi services were used over 56,000 times, and we saw an increase in overall circulation of over 72,500 titles, contributing greatly to the general library system. In 2024, Seneca County Libraries saved residents $3,953,165, three times more than the annual budget of each library combined. The Seneca County Libraries are able to grow and support our communities where they need it most, thanks to your support. Thank you so much for your time this evening and for your continued support of the Seneca County Libraries.
Thank you. All right, move back. April.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm just here to update you from last month. The town of Ramon was did find a location, so now I have land and I have a building, and so we have a place to rent the facility. However, the land hasn't been used and the building hasn't been used in a very long time, and to get it up to code for the New York State regulations, it's going to take a lot to make it sufficient. Since last month, however, Beverly has sent out a letter to the towns on the south side of the county that they will no longer be taking our dogs after December 31st. So after December 31st, we have absolutely, I don't know how many towns there are, there's Lundy, Inla, Cover, Ovid, I don't know, and Verigis too, yeah.
Tyre too.
Yeah, there's a lot of us that will not have a single place to put a dog. So we do have the location. I'm coming to tell you, I did some research. I looked at the New York State regulations that are going to be moved for December 15th, and it's a lot. You have to have a separate building for an isolation intake facility so that the intake dogs, until they're looked at and know that they're not infectious, can be moved to the housing, the kennels, where the dogs are going to be housed permanently. And then a building that will have a vet care, a nursery, you know, a meet and greet area for people to come to check the dogs for a dog. So I have done a budget. I am not a carpenter. I do not know exactly how much things cost. I just went with what I could research and other local shelters around our area. I can't apply for grants until I get my 501(c)(3) with the government shutdown. They're not expecting those right now. I'm still going to do the payboomer to get it turned in, but they'll guarantee when it will go through. So I am just here trying to tell you guys what's happening. Here's a copy of what it wants, a copy of this. There's a picture of a kennel that can be done. There's a copy of the letter that was sent out from Beverly. And I'm just looking for help to get this started, so we have somewhere to, I do. So we have somewhere to put these dogs, you know, after December. If there's questions, I can try to answer them. I've gone through all of these regulations, there's quite a few pages of it. It can be done, and I know that we have a lot of community support that will help with the labor, that will help, you know, building. The kennel connection keeps coming and be blocked down. The problem is, is I thought it was only going to be three towns, and now it's a lot more towns than that, so it's going to be, you know, Beverly is pretty big and they're full all the time, so 16 kennels and dogs might not be sufficient for six towns. You know, I don't know how many dogs we have in towns technically got, so, yeah. So we have to sort this out and try to figure this out. So we do have the property. We have, you know, a building that can be renovated for the vet care, for the nursery, for that stuff. There's a concrete pad there that was an old pavilion. I can build the isolation and intake building on that concrete pad, that would be sufficient. And then we can just drop a kennel in the back field where the dogs can be housed there until I can get the 501(c)(3), get some grant money, and go from there. But that still could get us open and be able to keep the dogs there. So I do have agen markets coming to the next meeting that I'm having on December, or November 10th, I think is the date for that, here in Ovid. So Caitlin and her supervisor Emily are coming to look at the property to see if it's sufficient, which I'm pretty sure it is, and to let us know that what I've done is appropriate. So they will be there if anybody has questions for them, you can come to them, you can ask them. So I can send an email on the time, it's at 6:00 on Monday night, I think it's November 10th, I think that's when it was. No, that's the day before the elections, the following Monday. So they are coming to that meeting for question and answering and looking at the location. Okay, so we're just kind of out in the air, but we do have a location, so.
Yes, we want to ask, what happened if we don't get our act together by December?
I don't know. I don't know. I have a small kennel at my house that they said I could use until we get something in the morning, but I don't have three kennels at my house. That's it. So I don't know. You know, we can't foster because we're not in the program, and you have to like check these people out, give them a foster now, and have a list of people you can call, so I don't know. And they don't know what to tell me either.
Where's your brief take place?
In Ovid, but the firehouse here in Ovid, yeah. I could spend, Amanda, a day in time to send out to everybody, so we've been, uh.
She would like a party.
Just a couple things. One, I would suggest reaching out to Libby Post.
I did, yeah, I contact her all the time.
Okay. I know, to answer some of your questions, I've been in conversations with Libby. She was very helpful. Tyre being really tiny, if you have less than five dogs, you can pound a year, you don't have to go to the full new regulations. So there are some things we might go to do, but legally, every municipality, every town, we're required to have a dog control officer and a place to take the dogs, and we don't have anything better to figure it out. I mean, that's what I was told.
Yeah, and I have been talking with Libby a lot too. She's very helpful. She's involved in the New York State Animal Protection Federation, which we can join once we get our 501(c)(3). Some of the things she tells me the New York State agen markets doesn't agree with, they tell me it's not, so there's a little bit of a, yeah, so I have to be careful with what I do with that, so.
Is it possible to get Libby in that meeting?
I have asked her. She is very busy too, but I have, I told her a medium time, she said she would try. Yeah, so hopefully, we can get all of them there, we might get some answers.
Since I talked with you, I, your meeting, I told the lady in the office, call back and said not to worry about December 25th. They're going to give us a whole another year. And I told her, in our case, we only have heat in our shelter. She said, they want you to make, try and make advancements. So she says, go ahead, we need to, and put the air conditioner in, and you're satisfying their thing, because they're going to rewrite this whole thing. They know it's ridiculous, so we've got to give her a whole another year or two.
To get up to the regulations.
That's what she told me. Don't worry about December of this year.
Okay.
We never, they've done this and passed it in 2022, and we're just getting it in June this year.
Right, right.
So she said, don't worry about it.
Right, so the regulations.
Just keep making progress so we can go along.
Right, but I still have to find a place to put these dogs. Even if it's not after regulations, I still have to have a place to physically put them, because Beverly's not going to take them.
I called her, and I'm not surprised she called me back 6:00 that night.
Yeah.
That's, that's the way I understand it for her.
Yeah, that's good. Anything else? Okay, then I'll send, I'll give Amanda the information for the meeting in November. Okay.
All right, open the floor. Anybody from the public would like to address the board, and now would be the time. All right, let's get a pool of the minutes for September 19th, 25th. First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here. Any special committees have anything to report? I guess not. I don't have anything. County attorney in the back, you have anything?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, you have anything?
I have nothing.
You have not?
Thank you.
Communications.
Communication 166 through 187 of the decision file.
Thank you. Okay, first up, Ways and Means, number 11, Supervisor Partey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our supervisor authorizes an agreement with third vote and does an amendment to the 2025 subject county budget.
Score.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here, number 12.
Our supervisor's authorized amendments to the 2025 subject county budget.
Score.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here, number 13.
Our supervisor's calling on the governor and state legislature to.
Score. Second.
Got first and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here.
Our supervisor's urging Northern Kentucky Department of Public and New York State Legislature to fund more infrastructure spending to assure New York and have a fiscal sustainable cash without changing the possible government access.
Second.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here. Any questions?
Our supervisor's authorizes a resolution to adopt law five of the year 2025 to override the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law Section 3-6.
Score.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
We're staying.
We're going to stay in one extension, Supervisor Hunter. She's got a duck in there, man. All right. Next up, number 16, Supervisor Heisen.
Yeah, thank you.
16, yes, yes, sir.
Authorizing offer for the agent annual.
Annual?
For.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here, number 17.
Authorizing badge act for agent service, score. Second.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here, number 18.
Kentucky County Board Supervisor approves the 2025 Child and Family Services Annual Plan update for Parkinson's, Social Security, and Youth. Score.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here, number 19.
Our supervisor's approving 2025, the 2026 resource allocation plan for state aid funding for the youth program.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here, number 20.
Kentucky County Board Supervisor supports the exact 2025 Fall Center, our standing committee on Medicaid and Human Services. Score.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here, number 21.
Authorizing second of annual federal companies to blood innovation. Score.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Renowned.
Vote, here. Number 22.
For the play October 23rd to the 31st, 2025, a red ribbon tweet. Score.
Lots of support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here. We're finally done, we need to. All right, public works, number 23, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor approved funding and agreement for Martin and Judas to perform feasibility study for the new highway.
Score. Or.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, here. Number 24.
Offered an agreement with John Snyder Architects for architectural and engineering services related to the health and human services of the building renovations.
Or.
Got a second, discussion? I have a few things I'd like to throw out there. It's more of a concern on this. The only thing I'd like to say is that I'm concerned with using this architect service again. The reason I'm concerned is, we have a project that they are a part of, that is now going to be at the end of this year, if it gets to the end of this year, a year behind progress. You know, this project, Office for the Agent, moving them over, was supposed to be done December 24th. Then there was a few window of different things, but now it's October, this project's still not done, still not done. I have strong reservations about using them moving forward. That's just how I feel. I mean, I don't know when, when are we going to draw the line on keep buying using this? We keep buying just, you know, if your kids don't do the chores, you're going to pay them for their allowance, if they get one? I mean, I just, I have strong reservations. I don't know when they're going to be moved. I just think that needs to be considered. I don't know, that's what, that's what I have, Supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, we have a contract with them, and if there's a deadline, we take money off from that, and it's gone, and I don't know. I would think that would be the path we should take, get a contract, have to pay the lines, and after that we can stop paying, or maybe so, for doing it. Thank you. There's been several conversations between myself, Bob Stuck, ours been involved, we discussed these issues, and I guess Art, correct me if I say something, I shouldn't go astray here, but we talked about timelines and penalties for not finishing on time, and it's kind of been put out there that the problem with this project is there's three separate contractors, and there's not really a general contractor per se, and there's been, for lack of a better term, zero communication between the three of them, where the architect, John, has gotten involved to try and get these projects pushed forward. I completely understand what you're saying. I cannot say in a good conscience whose fault it really is that the project stalled so bad, and I think Art probably should be better to it as far as whether or not we can or cannot put penalties in for not finishing on time. We did have that discussion, and I guess, I think the problem was that the one contractor is going to point the finger to, the HVAC contractor is going to point the finger to the plumbing contractor, where it's going to be here at litigation for years in this. That was kind of what I was led to believe through the county attorney. I completely understand, if you want to table, you know, this one and have a conversation with John Snyder regarding this before we move forward, that's certainly acceptable, and I would have no problem sending this back to media, I know more than time, Chris Ransfield might get these projects moved along, but there is a concern, why don't we push it back to the next committee cycle, have John come in and explain the project, so everybody feels good, and if we're not satisfied, then we could certainly amend it to a different. I like that, let's make it many, and let's have a couple conversations.
Second, have a moment.
So you may move down, we may move on, got a second, any discussion with the Senate Committee?
Guess I took it, of course, back too far. I mean, so right now, Art, correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, but our permits, the permits for that job end at the end of this month, they're done. The construction permits, the job right now. Correct. Yeah, we're talking about. Yeah, so the process of the OFA being done, right now, we're in the middle of doing punch list divers, and then working on our CMO to get the OFA moved in. But I think we're still on good front, if we, like Supervisor Constance, we'll push it back to committee, it'll be a two week window, we'll have, you please have John in the next committee cycle, and we'll pass this out, and then we will move forward at November meeting, whoever everybody suspects. And we'll do it as a public work group, but everybody is obviously welcome to attend.
I'm just, I'd like to ask our co-director director to be there as well.
Absolutely. And our.
County attorney, total, one, all right. Okay, got a first and a second discussion, all set? All in favor of the. All those in favor of pushing it back to committee?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Thank you. Okay, number 25.
The resolution calling on the state of New York to increase thresholds for public construction projects.
Support. Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Number 26, Supervisor Boon.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Let the Lewis and Hurry State Rearch establish a working rule to identify safe and sustainable alternatives to the land application when biosol is contaminated with TFA acids and other emerging contaminants.
Support. Got second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Number 27.
Update of ordinance to the Regional National Law Department by...
Support. Second, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. That's it. Thank you. All right, back to Supervisor Reinhardt.
Number 28, authorizing paid low start rate for correction officer Robert.
Support. Got second, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Number 29.
Approve the creation and filling of the deputy director of real property and hire of a start rate.
Support. Got second, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Number 30.
Appoint acting real property director Christina Lo.
Support. Any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Number 31.
Advising policy number 510.200 policy for supporting breastfeeding employees.
Support. Second, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Number 32.
The resolution ensures local law of the year 2025 sends our county public officers to...
This second, discussion, we're going to put it under resolved public hearing. We need to change the date to...
What's the 13th?
The 13th, 2013, due to the holiday on July 11th. Support. Got second on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here.
A resolution as amendment.
Support. Got second, any discussion? Yeah.
We have a board, we're meeting in 13th.
Yeah, we have to, we're going to do that later. We have to change that. Any more discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Okay. Next up is number 33, Supervisor Down the Truck.
Authorizing development of engineering equipment, certification for insulation, with pressure reducing valves.
Got second, sorry. All of you in favor? You going to make a motion? Please. That could be a little bit, I'll second that. Okay. We're going to, there's, we need some further work on this, so we're going to have to go back to committee. I finished the presentation, what I'm wanting. Yeah, there needs to be more discussion on this.
I'm just feeling a little bit... Still, the question already was... Did it already get sent back to committee?
Sent back to committee, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's going back to committee.
Each, there you go. Part of the...
Yeah. Okay. It's going back to committee. Question, the second, any discussion on that? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Dave, do you want to do 34th? Supervisor, David, go ahead.
Authorizing the operation vehicles of the New York State Route 384.
Support. Got second, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Okay. Supervisor Reinhardt, it's your turn.
Supervisor, all of the supervisors and they can own property, search, flush, and other ways sale by auction.
Support. Second.
What do we get this? What do we get for auction? Where do we, where do we end up with that? Where do we give that, like, junky one?
Okay.
See, blind... Oh, because the guy goes on, I mean, your...
Any more discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Okay. Number 36, Supervisor Down the Truck.
Authorizing out number 51 of the regional national air for...
Support.
... advisory committee.
Got second, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Okay, hang on, I'm going to... Any law in business? New business? Supervisor, Chipper.
Thank you, Chairman. I offer a motion to introduce the following resolution to any and all new business that come before the board in accordance with Rule of Order Number 2010.
Support. Got second, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Supervisor, Chipper.
Thank you. Board of Supervisors amend rules to change November meeting date to November 13th.
Support. Got second, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Okay. Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, here, nothing else. I would like to make a motion to enter into an executive session pursuant to Section 105 on Act of the New York State Public Meeting Laws to reduce the benefits of the Department of Public Ministry of Public Health or personal incorporation or amendment of the use of the...
Support.
And I invite the Deputy County Manager, all members of the Board of Supervisors, and County Sheriff.
We're going to meet downstairs.